We will start our meeting at 2:32 on August 10th, 2023. Call the meeting to order. Board members excused tonight are Hankel, Trustee Hankel, Trustee Rube, and Kurt Trezor Berry. The rest of the board is in attendance this evening. Administrator Shaw will be taking notes. Please stand for flash. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, with its own privileges and justice for all. All right, a couple of comments from Esther Melman-Harko. Can you please stand, state your name and your address?
Melman-Harko, 3848 Saratoga Court, in the wood block six forty-five. And I was just basically here just if there were any questions that were that you may have had according to my application, I've had filed for the permit for the fence. So that's really why I have changed the name.
You want to put in a fence and everyone see the fence on our agenda this evening?
Yes.
Can you share some reasons why you want to put in a private defense versus like our standard fence is can only be four foot by and has to be fifty percent physical, like a picket fence or an iron fence? And I did actually drive by your property today as well as a few other people just to make sure we knew where you were and what you were looking at. So tell us a little why.
All right, when we first moved in, one of the things we were, the first one was actually put the fence up for our grandchildren. That's really one of the main reasons for them. But then also before my, as my wife was doing, I guess, the research level, it was the most big issue was with the property, also trying to add more property value to the property as well too. But for me, it really, it goes back to with those trees that are back there. They're like, I don't know whose idea was to put these trees back there, but it made a nuisance. And they were like, we're always, they're always interfering now with the wires, with the power wires back there as well too. And so we do want to have something back there to be able to kind of, you know, kind of enclose, you know, the space where we are. But we're also going to be redoing the whole backyard as well to like the landscaping as well as well. So for us, it really was a matter of preference of doing the six foot, the four foot more for privacy, but also mainly for our grandchildren, let them over there on a regular basis too.
Okay, all right, you're taking out, I know you have a large hedge along place avenue and then behind your house that is like trees, big bushes. Are you planning on taking those out or are you just backing them up to it? I'm just curious.
We would, we would actually take the trees out.
Those are the ones on the back of the property?
Yeah, the ones on the back of the property.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. And that, and that, once again, because one, well, a couple of things, once we had people look at it, they were like, well, if you look at them right now, we've had the trees cut down since we've been there. We haven't come back a few times. They continue to go back as well too.
Okay, okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? But we can just consider it on our agenda.
Have you looked into options for four foot fences? Do we have quotes and other things for that?
No, we guys post for the six foots.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so you are on our agenda and will have to make a decision and we will let you know if you want to sit around if you can, if you want to see the wall, you can do that as well.
I mean, I could, I could sit around a lot.
All right. Okay, make motion to consent to the agenda? Motion made by trustee. Can I need a second? Sorry, give me a second. A motion made by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Studi. Sheriff's report.
Village Board members, in the month of July 2023, deputies spent more than four hours in the village. Throughout the month, deputies conducted twenty-two crime events in the village of Elmer Park. Deputies conducted several traffic stops issuing the following citations. One for speeding, one for operating a vehicle while repulsed, and six citations for parking violations. Deputies continued to maintain an active presence in the village of Elmer Park. Assigned deputies as well as area cars continue to safeguard our residential areas, ensure business, security after hours, and conduct traffic prevention and enforcement in the spirit of community policing. In the July, deputies did spend four hours of bill time in the village for an invoice total of $240.12.
Okay, questions for Sheriff? I actually have, maybe you don't have that today. On Elm Tree Court, there's been a constant person parking on the street overnight.
Okay.
And they may have already gotten citations. They looked into getting a permit to just park permanently, but that's not going to happen.
All right.
So I don't know if there's any way besides getting a ticket where you just, we've tried to reach out to the family and talk to them, to remind them that that's our little ordinance, you cannot park on the street between two and six a.m.
Yep.
And then also, we have also, do you know what I decided to say? So on North Elm Drive, there's a car with a flat tire that has had a flat tire for probably two months.
Okay.
They've already received a letter from us.
Okay.
But have not moved their car. And their car, they have a very unique parking situation. They're, they don't really have a driveway, they're kind of part of the alley, but their cars, they can park right in front of their house because they have like a parking.
Yeah.
You can't miss it, yeah, you can't miss, there's four cars, usually four cars in there. The white one, flat, flat tire, flat city.
So the flat tire is at thirty-four eighteen North Elm Drive?
Okay.
Thirty-four thirty-two North Elm, Elm Tree Lane, that's where we were.
Yeah, oh, that one we don't have. Is that one, oh, on Elm Tree. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thirty-four thirty-two, tree, thirty-four thirty-two, is it parking address or parking address? I thought they were also on Elm Tree. People have called and learned about them.
Okay.
So if you could just keep an eye on both of those addresses, do you need them again?
Nope, I got them written down.
Those are just two things that we've, we've shouted to them, they've gotten letters, Latira's talked to them, and we just need some pre-enforcement.
Okay, no problem.
Yes, and I've heard anything about the home town, my living area.
I have not.
So and then at National Night Out, Latira actually discovered that there's like a little fenced in area. And we actually talked to Jim Wyler, Officer Wyler. He was going to look into it and we just want to make sure he's not still living there. It's right behind the bootleg room in the Dollar Tree and there's like a little fenced in area behind some dumpsters, but it's like connected to the building. And we have a tarp up and all sorts of stuff and a lot of trash. And we don't know if he's moved on or if they're going to look into any services. So you could ask Jim Wyler if this happens or not.
I'll school up his, but it's early here.
Okay, just see if it's on.
Yep.
When I stopped by earlier, someone was taking a table in there, so.
Like putting a table?
Okay, all right.
Letting him move his furniture. So we're like, okay, what's going on now? So, okay, any other questions, Sheriff? All right, I don't think we have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Thank you for the interview.
Good job tonight.
You too. All right, President's report. Just to keep you updated on the windows, we are continuing to work on a bid. We're going to get KIMI. They were going to put together a bid for us, but we really don't want to give them any more money personally. They did a lot of work for us about doing a lot of work. So Laura brought up in an email, she wasn't here today, that maybe we put out the request for bids later in the year, like October or November, because it's not like we're going to start until next year anyways. However, keep in mind that weather tight prices will just continue to rise. So I probably will make this a discussion on the next meeting just to see what you guys want to do. Latira and I, if KIMI does not have the bids pulled together, Latira and I will work to get a bid out sooner rather than later. And then at least sitting there, we can put it out, you know, as soon after the next board meeting. That's one thing that she brought up. The basketball hoops, we talked about basketball hoops at the beginning of summer. Kendall told me that we do have money set that he can use towards basketball hoops. So that's also going to be probably an agenda item. If you have any problems with the basketball hoops, I do think it's how they've been invested for the gym because we do have a lot of people going in there in the winter, but I would like to move on that pretty soon, so probably in September as well. We are reaching out to the kids that we're thinking about putting forth like a thousand dollars towards it. Tom knows grandson and some of his friends, so we're going to see if that's still going. The little library is hopefully being built. I have not talked to Greg in a while, but Greg Talek, one of our middle residents, offered to build us an adult and child little library. And then I could not think of an artist to paint it. And then I realized we have Linda, who is like an amazing artist, she's going to actually make it beautiful. So Greg is going to build it and it'll go to Linda, Linda will paint it, and then it'll be installed in the park. Hopefully, I'm hoping within the next month possibly before it gets too cold, yeah. And then the last report I had was, we talked about the speed hump at the beginning of summer. And then that kind of fizzled and we didn't do any, take any action. And I don't feel like it makes any sense to put in a speed hump this late in summer. But I do think that it's something we need to think about installing in spring because that is a very long stretch between from the end, like where East Elmwood and South Elmwood go, all the way to Taylor. There's that one side some, but it is much longer than the other side than, I mean, it is comparatively. We have a whole herd we can go around.
But we also bring up on there and between, like, if you like, you want to carry a truck.
So it's something, I'm thinking, Latira and Kendall and I are going to put out the letter to go up and collect the next newsletter and it might be somewhere in there or it might just be its own standalone speed hump this may be coming next spring. It would be great if everybody could check on the lawn machine over.
I just was there today.
And was that pretty, like?
Oh, yeah, I thought, well, this is nice.
Okay.
Forget it, I mean, definitely save.
It's closed, you don't, I don't want people like, I don't want people wrecking their cars, but I do think it would be good. And I think that would make a lot of people happy. So I'm going to write that down if I said that clearly. So those are really the only things that I have on my agenda. Other reports, trustee Johnson? Trustee Studd? Trustee Studi?
I just want to say that National Night Out was a success again, Mr. Eric. It was a great turnout. We had families that came up that didn't have children and I thought that was fantastic. It was cool making fun of them, so I thought that was really good. Toon Mont Taylor is our final one this week, Tuesday. So.
Hump, 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 right?
It's supposed to be really nice outside, so.
It's a bump.
Yeah.
But it was always there.
They'll be tacos.
They are, yeah, we have a great taco truck.
It's good.
They got big tacos.
Yeah, it's so fun. Trustee Witt? Okay, Administrator Shaw?
Yes, so we worked on a few things, so we're looking at the hard rock sign completed, so.
That looks good.
We're very excited.
Oh, we should have asked them about it.
And I've been working on the folders, have we done them? Still have a few things to add, like some community watch things. I've got some.
Do you have a brand new residence on it rather than just giving them a little booklet on the inside?
So we have a big booklet, so we have a booklet in there, books in there, books in there. So the little booklets in front, and then we're going to be adding the watch information and the events. Like, because we have a little.
So will they deliver to them as they arrive or are they maybe like, they come up to the office? How will they be distributed to you?
So we, I would say they're going to take it to the work team, I think.
Pat Black still helps do that.
Okay.
And Barb? I have a question. Did you get a packet when you moved in?
No, I did not.
Okay, so you didn't get one.
She's done at our house on the road and so she says, oh, you never got one. She said, I'll go get it for you back.
Never saw her. So we'll make sure, in fact, you probably can just take that one if you want.
Then how far would you get one of these welcome packets?
Did you get a welcome packet at Elmwood when you moved in?
I don't remember. Someone, someone came to the house.
Okay.
And welcomed me, so they may have given it to my wife.
Okay. Well, you can take this one today as well, if you would like. Because we added some extra information in there, including, I think the most important thing I told Latira, she did a great job of fixing up the booklet. But nobody understands the recycle time and when bulk pickup is. And so we have John's disposal like calendar in there, which I think is probably one of the most helpful things, so.
And the website information is also there, so.
I actually might want to see if I have to come up.
And then for the dumpster area behind the bootlegging, so I went back there. The pickup was Monday, but there were still some items, so the air, not the air fire, the grease containers that were back there is pretty heavy, so we're trying to figure that out now because it's like, that's something you can just go pick up.
That way you know what to do with it.
I wanted to contact a scrap person if they want that metal.
Oh, that's up to them too.
Yeah. Because that could be worse something.
That's a good idea.
There's plenty of scrapers. Anyone sees one driving by their house.
Incidentally, they look at the tires, so that's gone.
Yeah, so Brian, did you see she cleaned up all of that back there? The dumpster's gone, everything.
Yes, I'm just excited about this.
I was very proud of that. I was just.
And then asphalt contractor did come, but they didn't like do a full job. So I'm trying to try to jump them again because the first one was like straight, but not in this area. So we don't know.
Was there a car spark there or?
It shouldn't have been any car spark there. It came on the first and the second. So, yeah, so we window checked and it was.
Something and they keep not answering.
Yeah, so I'm going to reach out to Tim Loft again. I wish I could, Tim today left a voicemail, so hopefully I hear something back, maybe tomorrow. And then I was thinking about like possible village attire. So I got the idea kind of from Chris because he always has his Presley shirt on. So I was thinking maybe we could get shirts made or like costumes, things like that.
Yeah.
Thoughts? I think it would be really nice, especially like community events, for people to have the same shirt on. For National Night Out, they actually gave us National Night Out shirts over there, they were sporting those, even though it was an extra extra large. So just, I like that idea, so.
Like a whole shirt kind of?
Yeah.
Especially more than this.
Why didn't you have to tell Latira? She's got an idea of where you can get shirts made.
Yeah, you can actually just purchase, we can purchase shirts where you guys that fit well. You got an old charity catalog and then just take it to a lettering company and you can all show these second year book going, it's stitched out, so it's not like plastic, you know, some shirts.
Yeah.
All those are actually stitched embroidery.
Oh, nice.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you so much. And then the week of the 21st, I'll be at the office for the training, so the chief workshop.
So you're gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right?
Yep.
She didn't know she'd be in on Tuesday. I told her because she's working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at the training, that maybe she just doesn't come in on Tuesday. Because she, you're, are you staying overnight there? Yes.
Yeah.
So I just figured that would be easier, so.
Look, Ken, we have a call waiting to do.
Yeah.
For you. So that was my report.
Good. We did have one question. Latira and I were trying to brainstorm about what to put in the following newsletter. Would you like that? So I already said we're going to have probably either a standalone letter just for the three of us now that Latira's got my feet wet, Kendall's going to the office for a while, I've got my feet wet, just what we've done with the summer, all the things we've accomplished, so people are aware. We may have a trick or treat section or let people know that we've usually followed the city of Racine just so people are aware. Kendall brought up a great idea last year of doing a turkey trot on Thanksgiving. So events committee, if we think we want to do that, that might be fun. We could start at the playroom and run around the circle.
Or a turkey walk.
Yeah, yes, a turkey walk, that's correct. I'll save the date for the Christmas party in that newsletter. Possibly something about the new hoops for the gym. An announcement about the car show, obviously, because that's coming at the end of September. And then if you guys have any other suggestions, maybe I say something about a possible speed hump or maybe I'm waiting till winter, let people know that we're working on it. If you have any suggestions, reach out, let us know. If you can fill in the newsletter.
There's just maybe a question when it comes to, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, with the events committee, having like what the events are scheduled up. When does this, when do you guys kind of sit down and set the schedule for what the events are going to be? Like the trip to trap and Christmas party, is it like, is it set in like January or is it just going on?
Usually in January. In the, in the past, when Chris was here, we, we sat down in January and basically said, let's pick all the dates for everything, so it was all set and it's done. I feel like with Chris leaving at the end of December, I kind of had it planned out, but I don't, like, I don't know if we ever sat down. Like, I kind of knew when they were going to have them, we kind of talked about them. But typically, I really like it when it's in January, we just know when we have like a schedule ahead of time. Does that help?
Yeah.
If I say. All right, anything else? So if you have any ideas for the following newsletter, please, please, please let me know. Okay. New business, discussion and possible approval of new AC unit for building number four. A little information about this, Kurt Rube took care of this. It completely went out, there was no saving it, it was not in good shape. So he took care of getting three bids for us. They're on the back of your packet, if you could take a look. One is from Keystone. One is from, what's the name of this? These are all.
Building Waters.
Building Waters and First Call.
I am not an age back person, so I'm assuming these are all similar.
Yeah.
I'm looking more at the warranties and labor.
I was looking at the oranges. First Call has a three-year labor warranty and a ten-year parts limited warranty.
That one stands above Keystone.
And then the warranty, oh, because it has a one-year labor versus five-year parts.
And Building Waters?
Building Waters is the most expensive of all.
Just like, but that is a five-year labor warranty for actually a thousand dollars.
Thoughts? Anybody else?
We always say we go up there, right?
That's, that's.
I mean, six, maybe more.
Which one do you like then?
First Call.
I do too, and I personally made it to the first one. Personal, not that that should be, but like far, far relative. And they've done really good work at my house, but I don't, I mean.
I mean, they're all through regular companies.
They are, all great.
Could you just ask them, strike out the two-year, ask them if they do a five-year, we'll take it.
A five-year labor warranty?
Right.
Or which one, for, for First Call?
For First Call. Because that would match up to what the other, well, actually, so obviously. But Building Waters. It's worth a try. I mean, you know.
Yeah. Although if we do that and they say no.
Yeah, I mean, if that's coming from the manufacturer, though.
Well, labor warranty.
Oh, labor, sure, yeah.
Not parts, just labor.
Right, it's a ten-year parts warranty, which is awesome. But the three-year labor warranty with the five would be better. It's not the rates of the first three years. We don't know that.
I don't know, Laura, Laura liked Keystone better, and I don't know why. Because just the note I hear, the.
It was Kurt, yeah.
What's Kurt's note? Where's that note on the, with the unit?
It allows you to use it.
Right, that's right. So the. Kurt Rube, Kurt worked with Keystone, he said that Keystone is a sheet mill shop, but they have allowed Kurt to use to create fixes or replacements for parts in the village as needed, to save the village money by aligning today. Kurt appreciates that, but Keystone will like to continue that relationship with money in the future. That was from Kurt, yes.
How F the cost of.
Right, add, is that, you know.
With one year of four.
One year of labor, so your cars and the six hundred dollars reason price. And I, I mean, I totally appreciate that. But I mean, I guess, I, I just evaluate, I guess, the relationships and the cost of parts, you know, does it balance out? I don't know. Whether it's just the amount of the steel over there, it's for two years. Or we pay for the materials or the roads there anyway, so really it's kind of just, I, 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 it's. If the warrants matched up and things like that, I'd be a little more inclined, but I think for the, for the village and that budget and things like that, and we. I do like the three-year warranty better. I like the three-year. I can understand where it's coming from, but I do like the. Right, it's, it's, I completely appreciate that relationship and I don't really think that at all because it is, I'm sure that is very nice to have. But. I don't really could override the, especially the warranty, the cost of twice as long in parts and three times longer than the labor warranty, I just, I just don't know. But that's in the best interest of the village. All right, well, do you want to make a decision? Kind of line or. I mean, can we, can we? I mean, I don't know, it's busted, so we have, it's a community that currently sitting in the area. So. I mean, they have air conditioning on one half of the building, but the other half they think not. I mean, you have a ha-ha day, that's really fine. And remember, windows are not available. Yeah. The thing, with the call, I mean, with the call, what do you still pursue regardless? Who's putting the best or?
I think we just, now and.
I mean, it's supposed to call, I just kind of, kind of know.
Say no. Say, okay, we'll just go with the original one and have us some call.
Here, if you come back to say, oh, we have another two hundred dollars. Stuff I worked here, you know, that I guess, I don't think can amend or renew or improve that. Or things like. No, we probably have to get together again and we'll learn it one more time. So are we hearing that everybody is more, going to what's First Call or is it? Okay. All right, I appreciate the assistance in the. That's great. All right, so I need a motion for new AC unit for building number four to go ahead and name this Keystone. First Call being included, incorporated.
I'll make a motion to approve or placement of building four second year unit by using First Call at a price of four thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Studi and seconded by trustee Wittick. All in favor?
Have.
I opposed. Okay, yeah, you said it so fast. All right, discussion of possible approval of variance for hard rock fence permit. Assistant Harp Grove spoke at the beginning, faster, remember? That he is looking to provide more safety for his yard for his grandchildren and just to update and make his yard more beautiful. However, I do know, and just so you know, we have had a lot of, when we've done this in the past, it's become a can of worms for some of our middle residents, they get very upset. And then we have thirty people coming in not happy with us.
I think we were the only two at the time, this is going back three years, Rocktober, when we wrote the new.
Parents.
Parents for the fences. And it became very weird. I was grandfathering a cement fence, like, I'm your uncle. So, you know, come to, hey, they want to get pool, and then actually years, well, the fence, the pool's gone. Not saying that's going to happen by you. Looking at this particular fence, we had a gentleman in the village that came in and had an hour presentation on eighty-four thousand different homes in Sturgis and all Pleasant. I can almost guarantee the plant commission will not let this fence style go if we even approve a six-foot fence. There is, that's not, there's, you know, I'm not trying to be a jerk or anything, but I just know plant commission, I know what it is, what it has been. There is, that's not, there's, you know, I'm not trying to be a jerk or anything, but I just know plant commission, I know what, who has no precedent. Um, would this go on the inside of your bushes? Those bushes would stay?
No, we would take the bushes down.
Okay. Um, and I know you mentioned property value and stuff too, um. And where I'm located, to me, I, I don't wanna look out my front and see that type of fence that is the six-foot cedar fence. I would say yes right now. Um, but that style of fence, um, and I'm hoping to be selling it in a few years, I, I just, I don't see that as attractive for the village, let's say that. You know, maybe perfect what you're looking for for your own, have you talked to Brian behind you or your neighbors to the east?
Yeah, I talked to Brian, yeah.
Okay. And the neighbors to the east?
Um, I'm not.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, that would also be more than required.
Some of it you're not gonna have to do.
Yeah, like I said, if you came in with a six-foot cedar fence, we're, there again, I think, the house around the corner from you, alley across from, what, um?
On Oak Tree Lane.
What's his name from, what's his name? Like, that, who are they?
The, oh, Lee Peterson?
Lee?
Yeah.
Doesn't the house across the street have something similar to that?
There's a, there's a house across the street from us that had a pool, but then the house behind that, the one that, they wanted a fence because they had dogs. And that's what opened the can of worms, and we approved it, and then everybody was up in arms. And that is a, it's a nice fence, but it opened a can of worms.
It is even tough getting a house two down from you to the east, they've got like, they have little half-fence or, it's like personal fence.
Yeah.
You know, they came with drawers, they came in with all kinds of designs, talking to all the neighbors. Yes, we approved that because there again, they had the house, I'm not sure, well, no, you're in there now, but I believe that they had, um, dogs that they would adopt, or not adopt, they would foster. And they couldn't even go out and eat dinner on their picnic table. And believe me, I'm the biggest advocate for fences, because guess what? I don't need this person looking at my yard, and that person, Lou behind you, he's got a pool, you know, he was super, we wanna do a five-foot, B foot in my backyard, because I can go in Lou's backyard and see the top of my fence.
Right.
But I just, to be honest, the plant commission will not.
I don't think they will.
This design, there's no way.
I would, and I would go back and look at something, I, uh, Kendall, our cook treasurer, and actually myself, but mine is much older. She, they put in a new fence, that is a picket fence, and it is really beautiful, and I think it does, she has two dogs, one being a police dog. Um, and she has four children, and it does what she needs it to do. Um, does not create necessarily, you know, people not looking in your yard, but it does create a beautiful yard for her, and, and kids are enclosed and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, and dogs. So that's, I think that we're probably not gonna be able to pass it, unfortunately. Um, does anybody have any questions or anything you want to mention?
Um, could you come back with a, a report?
I think you could come back with another plan, um, that I can forward, maybe if you would like, or drop it off, Kendall.
Um, quick question, um, about the cedar fence, is that something that, that could be a possibility, that we're saying or no, by a big cedar? I, it has one board member, personally, I would approve it. Um.
I see where you are.
Because, yeah, yeah, right.
And you're taking down the trees, um, and the traffic being there, it, it might not be bad to look at, but it does, we do have to, like, we could go down it, but it does go to the plant commission.
Okay.
And then that's next up, which is, I don't know, so.
So I think most of the, you know, have a four-foot option, have a cedar option. That way you have more to present to them, you know?
I mean, these meetings went on for months, and it was typical, I mean.
It was.
I almost went to table through the window, because like I said, I went from an, I'm, I'm diagonal from you.
Okay.
Okay, with the white Cadillac and the black SUV.
Yeah.
And the baton, the thing there. Almost, like you said, grandkids, later it was ruined. You guys have done so much in the backyard, because I've got highways running across right by our yard.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, taking care of the bush as well, and like, residents to like, north end, I don't know what those are anymore. Um, but I would fight for you just to have that privacy, especially from your own, yes, with grandkids. I mean, you guys are out there every weekend.
Yeah.
Having a little party and having fun. And it's nice to hear, it's, it's great, like, you know, and there was a comment made by another board member, during this, during the fence thing, and all of a sudden, fires came up.
Yeah, yeah.
Hit.
Bombers.
And they should be out at 10:30 at night, and I, and, and I just looked at the other board member and said, and I don't know if you, Mount Lou Barrios behind my, behind my house yet. But he's got fires going at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. He's got it going on 24/7. And like I said, I'd rather have loose smoke coming in whenever my patio door versus here in the snowboard at 3:00 in the morning.
Right.
You know, and Lou's biggest thing too, is we've got three or four months, maybe three months to enjoy our yard.
Yeah, exactly.
And that was my little thing too, is I'm going from green tree fence to cedar, to improve, you know, my property as well, but I think, I can't say they're gonna say yes to a six-foot fence with planting, planting, or even the boards of a six-foot fence. But I, I mean, myself personally, I would, I would say yes to a nice cedar fence.
Yeah, I'm gonna probably come back with a couple of different options. Uh, I mean, I, yeah, I can come with a couple of different options.
Okay, I think it would be a good, that's a great suggestion that Lynda has, where you, this is, this is another option, or if you don't like the six-foot, you know, and you can say, this would be my, my first.
Yeah.
Preference, but would you look at this? That would be, I think, if it's smart.
Over on, um, the corner of South Elmwood, East Elmwood over by me, um, there's a lady that has an wrought iron fence, and you can see right through it, you can see if kids are gonna come running through, you can see her dogs. Um, doesn't create a sense of privacy, but at times, that's not also the best. I know, in my block, we have no fences at all, the kids just run around through them, it's a good time. But there was an instance where the back door of the people behind me was getting broken into by two teenagers, and we saw it, and their neighbors saw it. If there was a six, seven, eight foot fence back there.
That's huge.
She, there was a probably woman coming there by herself, and it would have probably not ended well if we hadn't seen what was going on in front of herself. I think it helps create a sense of community, it helps you to know your neighbors better when you have the access to them. Um, that's just one viewpoint I look at, because I live, but take a look at her fence, it's, it's really nice.
To the south Elmwood?
South Elmwood, right before you hit the curb, hit the north Elmwood. It's, uh, yeah, East Elmwood, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
I'm on East Elmwood, but yeah, it's a, for one-story home, it's really nice back there, so.
Well, you said, yeah, we also talked to a neighbor to the east.
Okay.
You know, so the next Sunday, you do come in, that you got something, even if it writes from the number, have Brian write something up, um, you know, we can come over to it.
Anyone else, or just one, just?
Just one.
Just your direct, direct neighbors, you know, and.
The neighbors.
Yeah.
It's the, oh, it's the, yeah.
Quick question, is there, um, is there a reason why you, why you gotta put that variance in place, the fire control six-foot fence? Is there a, is there a reason for that, or?
When, when we just started, I guess when we started talking about, there was a lot of people that were, eh, trying to get fences, we're in a different situation on that side of Taylor, in my mind, right? We're kinda like the outcast of the old park.
[laughing]
Well, hey.
[laughing]
You know, I mean, it's true, it's, they got nice roads, right, yeah. Um, but I think.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Yeah. And the other thing is too, I mean, if you come back here through the village.
Yeah.
Everyone, not right on top of each other, but it would just start to look so strange too. You know, and, and, and there again, when unset, you know, uh, village, villager came in with, I mean, poster board sizes of these fences from Sturdivant, and yes, all of a sudden, you have a white one and a tan one, and you have something different, and everything. It, it just makes the village look bad, and I think it, it was always trying to keep why it was done, it was always trying to reflect what the village of Elmwood Park is. You know, but it, you know, my last friend, the old shut up, but I remember one of the comments made to one of the villagers about fences, because I still think that, yes, you're adding value to your, your property. You're paying your property taxes, you're protecting your family, your grandkids, and it's not always great to see the neighbors behind you or to the side, but I remember the comment that I made is, why don't we put up a sign, welcome to the, well, there's all pools, because of the fence, welcome to the village of Elmwood Park, we don't want kids. You know, because it's, you still wanna have that family atmosphere, and you still wanna have the aesthetics of the village. I mean, even doing the windows, we've been talking, we don't wanna change the aesthetics of this area either. Um, but I think in your location, I, I, I just, that particular fence will not fly with plant commission, so, I'm sorry, we're, yeah.
No, that's great.
I'm very passionate on this whole.
That's great. I, yeah, that was great information, though.
Yeah, I agree, I think it depends, like you said.
That guy, great guy that you see.
I, I raised five kids without a fence, and we loved it. But also, I'm not on Taylor Avenue. I'm in the back of the subdivision where my kid can run around, someone back.
We don't like that, I mean, this is.
That's what I'm saying.
You're right, 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 yeah.
So that's what you said, it's a little different when you move further into the neighboring area, kids run a little differently, we don't have obstacles like you guys do.
So, and, and those are, that's a great thing to also bring up, coming back, just to say, you know, my location is different from this side, I think that's, I could, that's, those are really great points.
Yeah, I mean, especially like there, I mean, yeah, like Ally said, I mean, because cars are doing seventy, eighty.
Yeah.
There was a car that hit the tree right across from Maryland a couple of years ago, because they were turning a lot, and they must have been on their phone, and luckily, they ran into, uh, whatever space it was, the blue house, they ran into that tree.
Yeah.
You know, because, yeah.
So, okay, well, we need, um, I guess there's not gonna be a motion, because we're not passing anything, we're gonna table this and invite you back with, um.
We'll try to, next, next month, what's another option there?
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And welcome, and take this, take this.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's opening up the conversation about.
Yes, appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so you guys have a great rest of the evening.
Thanks for waiting through the meeting to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I did notice, um, our new business, we did, Kendall must have left off our accounts payable.
Oh.
It's not on there.
Sure.
So, do I add a line item if it's not on there? I've never been in this situation.
See, period.
That's what I was wondering, you know, everything you'd be able to amend, it's saying.
Um, I'm gonna amend that we, can I amend to approve accounts payable for August?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to amend a, um, item that we add to approve accounts payable for the month of August. Um, I'm gonna pass around, and if you can sign it, that would be great. Um, so can I have someone make a motion to?
I will make a motion for the resolution approval of accounts payable as amended by Pralina Gazza.
Can I have a second?
A second?
Okay, motion by trustee Sudi and second by, motion by trustee, ah, sign, second by trustee Sudi, all in favor? I oppose, okay.
Yeah, I'll look at a nice cedar fence for my front yard, but I'm not gonna look at plastic.
No, I agree with you.
I'm, it, because it's gonna bring along the value of my property.
Well, I think aesthetically, it doesn't, it's easy to take care.
It doesn't, it, it would never pass plant, it wouldn't pass the board, it wouldn't pass the plant.
The only issue is, they turn greens sometimes.
I wasn't sure if.
Oh, cool, thank you.
I wasn't sure if, um, he was gonna leave the trees up or not, or he wouldn't even see it.
If he, that's what I was telling Ben, I mean, I got a text from my wife going, she's like, well, if he leave the, if he leaves the bushes up, that'll be fine. So I sent her a picture of the.
But it sounded like.
The bushes have been gone.
That he doesn't want it.
And now I'm not gonna look at.
Yeah.
Maybe, great, it's a hundred and ten dollars a panel versus eighty bucks per cedar, but it's still, it's just.
For sure.
You know, everyone's got their own opinions, but it's just.
Well, I think it's why these, the, the guidelines were put in place in the first place, so.
Brian, that for the L C, you know.
I do not want to talk to a fan about little jiggies that we call here.
Thank you for.
Information, because I didn't know, I've heard about the.
Great.
Three other.